We have a... This is a meeting on the policies. So, we need to... The record should reflect that all seven board members are still present. Mr. Superintendent, did you have any comments to make at this point with respect to these policies or anything else on this agenda?
Mr. Barbieri, not on this agenda, I do not.
All right. Board members, at this point, if you'd like to make any comments about anything, we're at that point in the agenda. Mrs. McQuinn, I saw your hand, if you'd like to vote.
Okay. That unmute button, hard to find sometimes. Actually, I was a couple of minutes late because I was finalizing my comments for tonight. So, bear with me. I don't have them printed out, but they are pretty much imprinted on my mind anyway. I alerted Dr. Fanoi earlier today that I was going to reference him toward the end of my comments. I have been, as so many of us I know, very sad about the events of the last couple of weeks. And the best way for me to approach that is to share some of my own personal experiences regarding race relations as an educator. And I think that those personal experiences, they inform who we are. And we don't... None of us can walk in the other shoe. So, first, starting with, as a teacher, many... A high school teacher. Many high school students come to us... Come, excuse me, come to me with a predisposition to not like me because I am white. But I have the privilege of them seeing me every day. And they get to know Mrs. McQuinn, the person. And a great experience from that is that I did teach elementary school for five years. And so, some years later, when I had become an assistant principal, I was working late and driving home. It was getting dark, and I was in a predominantly black neighborhood and had a car accident. So, this young man came over to me, and he said, "Weren't you my elementary school teacher?" And I said, "Yeah, I was." That young man stayed with me hours until my car was towed away, and my husband came to pick me up. Now, that's a wonderful opportunity we get as teachers. I'm sure he's had a lot more negative experiences, but that was a really good one. It's kind of sad, though, that he remembered me all those years later. Maybe he didn't have that many positive experiences. Another is, it is both positive and negative. And I say it because we have so many whites who look at the negative parts of the protests with violence and looting, by the way, of all races, because I can watch those videos, too, and say, "Well, see, you know, we just turned to violence." But I have a situation that certainly has not changed how I feel, but I still feel badly toward the person who did it. When I was at the district office... I know this is going to take longer than three minutes, so just brace yourselves. When I was at the district office doing leadership development, Dr. Robinson is going to, and Marsha Andrews are both going to remember this very well, but we had Achievement Matters for All, a document that was worked on very intensely by, I think, everyone in the district and community members. And yet, here we are still today. But we had a department, I don't... Today, I think it's a multicultural department. And they were helping us with seminars and workshops to understand... It's the first time I had heard of diaspora. I didn't know that. And so, I thought I was well-informed about the history of our African-American, but I wasn't. So, anyway, so that this department was helping all of us understand the history of our black students. And so, I went to a full-day seminar one day, one of those seminars. And when we had our lunch break, and I was one of the few white people there, and when I went to my car, one of the members, a black female from the department, said, "Barbara, come join us, and, you know, get in this van, you know, we're all going to lunch." And so, I ran over and got in the van. And the driver of the van, who was very predominant in that department, immediately, not knowing I was there, began making very derogatory comments about whites. And it went on so long that one member... I have to use her name because she's such a kind, incredible human being, Margaret, and I won't use her last name. But she's the one who invited me into the van, and finally, she said, "Enough, Barbara's in the van." I still look at that person, and I don't feel good. But you know what? I don't feel good about her. It's not that I don't feel good about a race. And I think that's kind of where we all have to be. Some of us have had bad experiences with abuse, but you don't look at everyone as an abuser. I have... There's so much more, but let me give this one last one. Also, when I was an assistant principal, I was going to a workshop some distance away. And so, I asked a colleague if he wanted to ride with me. And this is really my point of today. Black male, I had known him many years. My stepson thought he was the most incredible educator. He used to come up to school on his motorcycle, and he was in counseling. Anyway, so he said, "Sure, I'll ride with you." And I, thinking that I should fill my gas tank, said, "Really want us to stop and get some gas?" And he kept giving me reasons. "No, we don't, we don't need gas. Is your tank on empty?" So, finally, seeing how dense I was being, and frankly, I never thought of this, he said, "Barbara, I'm a black male, and you're a white woman. We cannot go to a gas station." Never forgot that. So, it brings me to our superintendent. And I do think about, because of that other experience, when I go into his office and he shuts the door, I'm a hugger. Takes courage for him to be with me behind that door and let me give him a hug. And clearly, I'm going to get emotional, so here's my playoff message. You have to start with us, and I think at the primary grades, because so much is already in our kids by the time they're in middle and high schools. We need to start at the primary grades, working with our... And I am specific to black students right now, working with them and their parents and their grandparents to have the positive experiences. So, I'm just saying, let's make a concerted effort, as we're doing with reading, let's do the same thing for our black students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McQuinn. Mr. Shaw, and Mrs. Woodfield.
Thank you very much. You know, I've got to say something to Barbara. I thought that was one of the most amazing things that I've heard in many, many years. And I think it is so real. And the comments that the superintendent made, I think, set a tone for us. I've been through a lot of different things over the years. And every time we get ourselves in a position where there's a crisis situation, when our own being is being threatened, when we look at others and we are challenged to even begin to figure out how to react, I think it really becomes a reminder to everybody in the school district, everybody from the superintendent's office to board members, to our teachers, everybody out there, that our mission is to do what we can to protect the lives of the children who are in there and guide those kids into a future that gives them the opportunity to do the best they can. And what we've had to go through over the last week, it's very evident that we have many, many challenges that we have to face now. And I think that we need to renew our commitment to looking at every single child in this district and making sure that we're doing whatever it is we can to support them and be able to not only support them in their classrooms, but do whatever we can in the community to help promote some kind of realization that we've got to change and we've got to grow. And the comments that I know everybody will have today, I think we'll be focused on that. And everybody listening, remember, it is for the kids who are in this district, who are the future, that we have got to build something successful for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mrs. Woodfield.
Thank you so much. And I want to say a huge thank you to Dr. Fanoi. That was amazing, and I just feel like we're so lucky to have you in the leadership position. I really appreciate you sharing such personal stories with us. I wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the pain in the country right now. My heart goes out to the friends and family members of George Floyd and every person who's been affected by racial injustice. The best thing that I learned from the racial equity training, and thank you, Dr. Robinson, for always encouraging us to go, is that each one of us should fight inequality in the places that we see it and in the scope of our power. And I have been proud of the efforts of this school district, but I understand we have a very, very long way to go. And I want to share how committed I am to continuing this fight. I pray for our communities right now, and I commend those people who are out there making their voices heard. I want to say to all of them, thank you so much for trying to make our country better. I really appreciate it. Every person who's working right now, we deserve... They deserve our respect and our thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodfield. Dr. Robinson, go ahead.
Okay. So, my comments tonight will be longer than the rules allow, but I don't think that they will be any longer than the eight minutes and 46 seconds that that man had his knee on the neck of Mr. George Floyd. So, just listen. So, we have all seen recent events. I don't need to describe them. I do need to say how very proud I am of the protesters, because you know that I believe in civil disobedience. I'm glad to see that white people are finally outraged. I'm disappointed by the few of my children that followed the path of people from outside the community and were destructive. Now, the rest of my comments really started with a text message that I received from the First Lady of my church, and I made a few edits. So, it is true, all lives don't matter until black lives matter. You want to know why black people are angry? We can't be handcuffed and put in a police car unless we are beaten or dead. George Floyd. We can't go birdwatching in Central Park. Christian Cooper. We can't go jogging. Ahmaud Arbery. We can't relax in the comfort of our own homes. Both of Shawn and Atiana Jefferson. We can't ask for help after being in a car crash. Jonathan Farrell and Renisha McBride. We can't have a cellphone. Stephen Clark. We can't leave a party to get to safety. Jordan Edwards. We can't play loud music. Jordan Davis. We can't sell CDs. Alton Sterling. We can't sleep. Ayanna Jones. We can't walk from the corner store. Mike Brown. We can't play Cops and Robbers. Tamir Rice. We can't go to church. The Charleston Nine. We can't walk home with Skittles. Trayvon Martin. We can't hold a hairbrush while leaving our own bachelor party. Sean Bell. We can't party on New Year's Eve. Oscar Grant. We can't get a normal traffic ticket. Sandra Bland. We can't walk lawfully carrying a weapon. Philando Castile. We can't break down on a public road in Palm Beach County with car problems. Corey Jones. We can't shop at Walmart. John Crawford. We can't have a disabled vehicle. Terrence Crutcher. We can't read a book in our own car. Keith Scott. We can't be a 10-year-old walking with our grandfather. Clifford Glover. We can't decorate for a party. Claude Reese. We can't ask a cop a question. Randy Evans. We can't cash our check in peace. Yvonne Smallwood. We can't take out our wallet. Amadou Diallo. We can't run. Walter Scott. We can't breathe. Eric Garner. We can't live. Freddie Gray. We're tired. We're tired of the hashtags. We're tired of trying to convince you that our black lives matter, too. We are tired of dying. We are tired of being undereducated, and we are tired of our reality being denied. We can't breathe. We are increasing the depth and breadth of the Palm Beach County School District Police Force while investigating complaints about their behavior. And what training do they have on fair and impartial policing? I can't breathe. We look at the data and explain away it as poverty. Sure, poverty is a factor, but when we teach poor white children to read better than we teach middle-class black children to read, what is that? I can't breathe. We have talked about AP potential for years, but somehow, our efforts to place children in rigorous courses leads to disproportionality, more white children in advanced courses, and the gap widens. I can't breathe. We continue, after a quarter century, to defy the state law that says we have to include the history, culture, and wholeness of the African diaspora in every class, while we succumb to pressure and terminate a black male for saying stupid things, yet while doing the right thing by teaching about the Holocaust. I can't breathe. We have numerous dual-language Spanish programs, but zero dual-language Haitian Creole programs. I can't breathe. We have read the studies that show that all children, but especially black children, do better when they have at least one black teacher. Yet somehow, we can't manage to recruit, retain, and promote them at the same rate. I just got the resignation letter from my son's middle-school math teacher, who happens to be a black female, who resigned because she felt hostility at her school. I can't breathe. We have a handful of schools whose staffs are conscientiously working to be social justice educators, but we treat them like rogue agents for having the nerve to dream of doing things better. I can't breathe. We look at the other way while children in alternative areas that are overwhelmingly black and male are schooled in substandard facilities and denied access to career training that is right next door. And wait, have we done what we need to do to prevent the children from boarding that train to alternative area? No, because it costs too much, the system says. I can't breathe. We have universal gifted screening that is nowhere near universal and still does not identify the giftedness in black children. And do we look at the ways to do everything we can to counter the educational debt caused by the multi-generational lack of access? No, we don't. I can't breathe. It is time that we stand up and decide to dismantle the racist practices and systems within the Palm Beach County School District, because remember, it's our foundation. We're going to go into difficult budgetary times. If we do what we normally do, black and brown children and adults will get the short end once again. We must begin with the end in mind, with your equitable outcomes. We must change how we do business. We must get our knees off the necks of black children in Palm Beach County. So, as a chair of the Coalition for Black Student Achievement, I want each of you to know that the coalition is ready to work with you to change this institution that continues to have racially predictable outcomes. Just like police forces around the nation, there are good people inside the system that want to end the practices that uplift, validate, and affirm white adults and children at the expense of black adults and children. But this system is still built on its racist foundation. We must establish a new foundation. It's called equity. And remember, white silence is violence, because I can't breathe.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Dr. Fanoi? This is Bass. Is Dr. Fanoi still logged on? He said he'd like to say something?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you to all the board members. So, when we think about back to school, it should be some slides that need to come on the screen, and I'll wait for those slides. So, I would like to share an update related to the district reopening plans for the 2020-2021 school year. To help put this work into context, please recall that schools close on March 13th due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our district moved quickly to act on existing and modified crisis response plans pertaining to a continuation of education. These efforts included creating a comprehensive distance-learning website, distributing more than 65,000 computers to students, and we have served more than 2.5 million free meals at multiple school sites across the county. From mid-March to May 31st, we operated in response mode. Our collective efforts culminated in a successful closeout of the 2019-2020 school year last Friday. Now, on this particular slide, our efforts are focused on developing reopening options based on best practices that we will determine as a district. We will also solicit input from parents and various community groups to gather information to help us or assist us in districts' decisions. The next slide, please. The pivot from responding to reimagining education will take place beginning last week, and is marked by a creation of a reopening task force. In addition to a health advisory committee comprised of medical experts to ensure our top priority remains, health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff. We are working strategically to accomplish key milestones, including the launch of our first reopening schools feedback survey, which will go out later this week, followed by a board workshop next week on June 10th that will highlight the initial work of our internal reopening task force. More details will be coming. But please remember that although this can feel like an uncertain time for all of us, I want to be clear that we do know school will be in session in some form once the academic school year begins. Now, whether it be face-to-face learning following social distancing guidelines, continued distance learning, or a hybrid of the two, the school district remains committed to educating all of our children while providing families with the best choice for education in Palm Beach County. I want to thank our families, staff members, community stakeholders, and the school board for your support moving forward, and I look forward to sharing much more with you on June 10th. I also encourage parents and students to make learning a part of your summer routine. Please visit palmbeeschools.org/distancedlearning. This website contains a wide variety of summer resources and activities. It even has virtual field trips. Please also make reading a part of your summer fun. While most of us are confined to our homes, the adventure is found in a good book, Know No Travel Boundaries. And so, board, again, to sum it up, I just wanted to give you a high-level preview. We will have a much more in-depth preview of our efforts moving forward for the board on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fanoi. At this time, we will move to the consent agenda. There are no agenda speakers for this meeting. There are several items there on the consent agenda. Does any board member want to pull any of those policies off the consent agenda?
Can you go to the top of the agenda, please? Do you have minutes to vote on in the regular agenda before you get to the consent agenda?
I see that. I was too far down on the screen, I'm sorry. So, we have three sets of minutes on this agenda to... Mr. Shaw is making the motion to accept those minutes. Do we have a second? Motion, the second was by Mrs. McQuinn. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? No opposed, motion carries 7-0. We have no items to add for good cause. The superintendent has pulled nothing. Mr. Superintendent, if you change your mind, is there anything you want to withdraw from this agenda?
Sir, I have nothing to withdraw at this time.
The only item that's been pulled from the consent is POLA-1. Are there any board members who wish to pull anything else? All right, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Mrs. Woodfield, taken by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So, the first item on the agenda will be POLA-1. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. The computer's... Okay. I recommend the board approve adoption of proposed revised policy 5.1817, severe incident assignment previously named student expulsion.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. McQuinn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I'm sorry, Dr. Robinson, you have something you want to say?
I'm sorry, I think I'm confused. So, severe incident assignment is under consent, right? Are we going through the consent one by one?
No, ma'am. We approved the consent agenda, so we're just looking at POLA-1. Was there something you wanted to pull up and say?
Okay. No, no, no. So, POLA-1 is zero tolerance policy, right? Did I miss here? Maybe I misheard. Are we on POLA-1?
Yes, we are on POLA-1, but it talks about zero tolerance policy, but it also says, in parentheses, "previously named most severe consequences." So, maybe that's what you heard, thought we were on the wrong policy.
Okay, that's possible. I do have comments on this policy when the appropriate time.
This is it. We have a motion.
Okay.
You know what, Mr. Barbieri? Now that I look at it, I may have read the wrong one. This would be on the new business, POLA-1?
Right.
Okay, I read POLA-2. I apologize. So, let me read that into the record, if you don't mind. POLA-1, new business. I recommend the board adoption of proposed revised policy 5.18140, tolerance policy, previously named most severe consequences.
Okay, you got that straightened out. So, we need a motion to... Dr. Robinson made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Woodfield. Any discussion on this now? Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, again, I am really, 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 really glad that we are finally here with these changes. I'm almost anxious that we might mess up, so I just need to go through just a couple of little details. So, I just want to double-check. Line 26, so the statute says that expulsions can be with or without continual educational services. That's correct? With or without?
Mr. Oswald or Dr. Sheffield, could you please respond for Dr. Robinson, please?
It's with services, yes.
Okay, but I think this might be for legal. The statute says with or without. I just... See, I thought we got past that as a state. So, the statute still says with or without. Is that correct?
Ms. Carmona? Ms. Carmona is available to respond. Thank you.
Yes, the statute still says with or without continuing services as a policy that desperately always offers services.
Okay, and then, moving on to the paragraph that starts with line 46, the definition of weapons. So, all these things, whatever, the dirk, the slung shot, like whatever that is, all these things that are named as weapons, those are specifically outlined in statute. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, moving on to line 54. So, it says... So, this is the felony suspension piece. It says the school board has the right to expel any student who has committed these offenses, right? So, that's not automatic, then. I want to be clear. That's not like... That's... It's not automatic, correct?
Yes. Yes, you're right. It's not an automatic.
Okay. So, just to be, like, triple-clear. So, if I'm a student, I commit a felony offense off-campus, I am not automatically going to be expelled as if I brought a gun on campus?
Actually, as you will have noted on the agenda, there is a separate policy now for felony suspensions. What this specifically refers to is if a student commits a felony on campus, one that is not specifically enumerated in the policy, that's what that would refer to.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Okay. All right. So, but a felony on campus is still not automatic? Automatic expulsion?
No.
Okay, so a felony on campus would go through the discipline review committee?
Yes.
Okay. And then, to go to line 60 and 61, so there's no early reinstatement. The board cannot determine that a student who is expelled can return early under these circumstances, the narrowly-defined expulsion criteria now. That's correct?
Yes, because the zero-tolerance statute requires a one-year expulsion.
Okay.
Minimum of one year.
Okay. And then, line 71, "When applicable, these incidents will be reported to the assessor." When applicable, these incidents will be reported to the Cessor. Why, um, why don't we just automatically collect that data in the, um, school environmental safety incident reporting system? Why is it when applicable?
The Cessor has specific reporting requirements. Uh, you're correct in that the incidents that are outlined in the zero tolerance policy would be mandated, would be required to be reported in Cessor. So, perhaps the when-applicable maybe was a little extra language that could have been removed.
Okay, well, I'll wait to see if anybody else has comments before I come back to that.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, I just, June is also going to come in and weigh on in regards to the reporting of our Cessor requirements, June.
Yeah, our Cessor requirements are set by the state and they're tagged in our system, so they're automatically captured. So, you are correct. So, when-applicable, meaning if they are defined by the state as a Cessor incident, they will automatically be put into the Cessor system.
Okay, so, just so that I'm clear. So, Ms. Issa, you're, are you saying anything different than what Ms. Carmona said?
No, no, they are correct. They are the same. The language, when-applicable, really means to the application of Cessor definitions and how it's defined within our system.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, well, then, since nobody else seems to be talking, I would just move to strike the words "when-applicable" from line 71.
And if I may jump in again, I apologize now that I'm rereading this. The reason why those words would be there is because the Cessor, the state often changes the definitions in the reporting system. And so, this way, we would not be stuck with specific parameters as they are right now. We wouldn't have to revise the policy if they changed their definitions.
Okay. All right, I understand that. So, we can just have a conversation at a later time on how we look at our own data in this regard. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I have a question for, I guess, Lisa or Mrs. Issa. Is there going to be consistency on that DRC so that we don't get differing results for similar incidents? Because there's different people, there are, I mean, is there, what kind of consistency will we have so that we don't treat children differently because there's different people involved each time the DRC meets?
We will, we will be having trainings for all of the members. It'll be a consistent group that cycles through. So, we will have meetings and the individuals from the Department of Safe Schools and Support Services will be consistent on each of those meetings. So, we'll be able to monitor that. But we will be having trainings that go over what is in our student code of conduct, how it's defined, and then we'll go forward from there.
Okay, so somebody from Safe Schools will be, the same person will be at each one of them so that you can say, well, that's not the way we handled this the last time it came before us with the identical circumstances.
We will guide those conversations. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That takes us to board discussion items. And the one that I wanted to discuss was the, uh, was discussing the possibility of reopening some of our schools for organizations to use them for summer camp. And I realize that yesterday evening, the county health department came out with a, she was quoted in the newspaper indicating that there are now children as young as four years of age, I guess, that have been infected with the virus. Uh, up until now, I wasn't aware that any children, that young, young children have been infected. But, um, we're getting, I'm sure the other board members are getting the same, same kind of calls from the community. Uh, people want to go back to work, uh, you know, and they're, they're, they can't because they have nobody to watch their children. And, um, my thought is there's got to be some way for these organizations that want to use our schools. I, you know, I had a conversation with the director of the YMCA who called me and said, typically, they have 300 children at their YMCA in Boca Raton during the summer. They've been told to cut it back to 100. That same organization leases Sandpiper Shores Elementary School and has 80 children there. So, that's 80 more parents who go to work. And we're not allowing the YMCA to use Sandpiper this year. Um, I just think we need to have a discussion because, you know, the, the way I look at this is, we, the community has always supported us. Every time we've asked for them to increase their taxes, increase their taxes to help our schools, they've said yes. At this point, they're asking, please help us go back to work. You need to open up your facility so that the summer camps can operate, so that kids have somewhere to go. So, I realize that we have, you know, the issues with social distancing and everything else, but we really need to seriously consider helping the community because they're, they're stuck. I mean, I hear it every single day. I'm sure you're all getting calls, too. The other way I look at this is it gives us an opportunity to actually start the reopening of our schools during the summer to see how it works. Because instead of bringing 200,000 kids or how many ever decide to come back in the fall all at one time, we have the opportunity to possibly bring 100 or 200 kids to different schools to see how it works, how we can keep them, if it's possible, the social-distanced kids, and what we do to keep everybody safe, and how we keep the schools clean. It gives us an opportunity to see how it works, actually like a laboratory, to see if we can actually do it before we're faced with bringing all the children back at one time. So, I'd like to hear from any of my colleagues about how you feel. I saw Mrs. Brill and Mrs. Woodfield, so Ms. Brill, go first. Mrs., Dr. Robinson, I'm sorry, Dr. Fanoi, if you would, I saw your hand, so certainly you can preempt.
Well, so I have a presentation about this, but I would definitely want the board members to discuss it before I ask, um, Dr. Sheffield and Ms. Kwanahow to present our initial thinkings. But I think the board should go first.
Okay, so I saw Ms. Brill, Ms. Woodfield, and Ms. McQuinn. So, let's go in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Barbieri. And when we first announced that we were closing the summer camps and having our ESY as virtual, I did express, um, some concerns to Dr. Fanoi. I completely agree if we allow some of these, and I want to see Dr. Fanoi's presentation, but some of the, the programs to open up. Parents have a choice as to whether they want to send them there. And what I'm hearing from people, and I'm sure you're hearing the same, are the emotional, the mental health issues that are coming out from this isolation. I am so concerned between the isolation, the fears that these students have had, now with the layer also of them facing the racism and violence. I am so fearful for their mental health that I really want us to find a way to, as you said, maybe use this as a test also for when we open up. But I really feel we have to start opening up, letting parents get back to work. I was a single mother. I could not have handled what these families are going through right now. There is no way I could have worked, handled having a child with autism, and then handling having another child and trying to put this all together. So, I completely agree, and I look forward to Dr. Fanoi's presentation. Thank you.
Mrs. Woodfield?
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Barbieri and Ms. Brill. Um, I feel like, um, we have got to do a little bit to help these families out. Um, the stress that these communities are under right now, I think, is just too much. And we are the extended family for a lot of families who don't have people around here to help them and to watch children while they go back to work. Um, it is very difficult. One thing that I really want our staff to be thinking about that has been brought to my attention, um, really, after the, um, this terribly sad story out of Miami where the autistic boy was killed by his mother, I, I think we have to prioritize our severely-disabled children. Um, the respite that these families need, that we give to them, has got to be number one. I just, I mean, I know this is, is a silly comparison, but I know what it's like for the last month to, you know, not get much sleep and full-time care for someone. Um, it is exhausting. So, what they go through for years and years, they need us so desperately right now. So, I would love us to prioritize opening up, um, even in the upcoming year, our, um, our Royal Palm School, Indian Ridge, and Cluster Sites. I think they need to be, um, we need to figure out how to take care of these children. Also, they are the most difficult to teach virtually. So, if we can only open a few, um, I wanted to put my voice in there for summer school, for regular school. How can we make sure these parents, um, can send their children so we don't lose all the efforts we've made over the years with these children? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodfield. Ms. Quinn?
Uh, yes, concurring with you, uh, I've had many, um, and these are not from staff members. These are from parents who very much want to continue, I don't know, it's been decades of a camp, a summer camp at, um, Independence Middle School. So, I'm concurring with all of that, knowing there are many problems to be worked out.
Thank you. Any other board members want to comment at this point? Dr. Fanoi, you can go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Fanoi Martin, Mrs. Andrews. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I'm still having trouble with my computer after we had people to come out. But yes, I want to say that I've been working with Keith Oswald and the conversation I had with you just the other day. I was happy to hear that you were coming up with something. I was so happy to get those Glades schools, uh, added to the list for, for the online summer camps. But the Boys and Girls Club has really, truly been very much asking for help. They're working with, uh, Alana Alonso from, uh, our Health Department with a structure on how they're actually going to do it. I'm sure that's been presented to you, Dr. Fanoi, as well as others, Keith Oswald, as to how they're going to follow those guidelines. But we're looking at some of our more at-risk children in the Glades region where, uh, the Boys and Girls Club does a fabulous job with the summer camps. And they've been just in depression because they have not been able to get their lease. And many of those programs are out in the portables. They're not even sitting on our campus. So, I'm just happy to hear that something's going to be done. I just shouted and said, "Hooray," that we're going to try to do something. And that's just the Boys and Girls Club. There's so many children that need some help this summer. And I'm happy that, you know, that we've made some movement and making sure that these children can get the camp services and support they need.
Okay, so, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. So, prior, as, uh, Ms. Howell and Dr. Sheffield prepare, um, I'm on calls constantly every day with different superintendents. And Superintendent Carvalho made a comment in a, in a conversation around how school districts across the state are caught between, um, state regulations and CDC regulations. And so, I, I think I need to put that contextually because I think all of the board member comments are accurate. I, too, feel like we need to do our part to help people get back to normal. However, I think publicly, I want to say before Ms. Howell presents, we're going to do this deliberately. We're going to take our time. We're going to make sure that we follow as close as we can to these rules. And so, for those vendors who will be reaching out to, to secure leases, please be, understand and be patient that we will be just as particular about how you do this as, as the CDC guidelines. So, I'll turn it over to the team right now, but I just want the, the community to understand we're going to start small, but we have a team that can build rapidly. Uh, but we're going to start small in a very strategic way. Ms. Howell?
Thank you, um, thank you, Dr. Fanoi.
I'm Sheffield.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Dr. Um, Dr. Fanoi, and good afternoon, board members. Um, as Dr. Fanoi indicated, that I did spend the past few days collaborating, um, along with Dr. Fanoi, Ms. Howell, myself, with our community partners regarding the opportunity for us to provide some summer camps, um, utilizing district-operated facilities. And what we found during this discussion is that we really needed to take a deeper look at this in opening in phases of providing the services. So, phase one, in regards to having this conversation around, um, opening up for summer camps, is going to include, um, our community-based providers. Um, our community-based providers, these are our providers that currently have an MOU, um, if you, if I may say, with the district. And then phase two of the reopening for some additional summer camp opportunities would be, again, for community-based agencies without a MOU. And that particular, um, organizations would be requiring a lease. So, again, today, we're going to talk about phase one, which will be the agencies that currently have an MOU with the district. And so, I'm going to ask Mrs. Powell if she will go ahead, Mrs. Howell, if she will go ahead and share her screens. And as she share her screen and just take us through a little bit of where we are with the collaboration and what it will look like and some of our recommendations, you will be able to also see the agencies, um, where they're located in regards to phase one. And then we will continue talking about, um, what phase two will look like through the collaboration with our community partners. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Howell.
Good afternoon, board members and superintendent. Um, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share with you what we've developed. I am currently working in collaboration with the Legal Department and Risk Management to develop safety and best practices recommendations for our CBOs, which are community-based organizations to use the district buildings for summer camp. Um, once legal and risk management have reviewed and developed those safety and best practices recommendations, the new agreements will be brought to the board's attention. Dr. Sheffield mentioned that the summer camps will open up in phases, and the first phase will be our community-based organization sites. We have a total of 17 schools. And you also see the name of the providers who have signed MOUs with the school district of Palm Beach County. As it relates to our leased facilities in that second phase of openings, they are not listed here, but there are 33 sites that currently have leases that principals entered into agreements for summer camps. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Howell.
So, well, we wanted to keep it brief, uh, because, I mean, we definitely have a lot of details, but we are definitely moving in that direction. Um, as, as the PowerPoint presentations show that, you know, June 15th, we're looking to open in our first phase, and we'll entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
Dr. Fanoi, I have a quick question. Um, I've, I've got calls from city council people at the city of Boca Raton, and I saw the city of Delray Beach has an MOU. So, is my understanding, since Boca Raton wasn't on the board, that there is no MOU with the city of Boca Raton?
No, currently, Mr. Barbieri, the city of Boca Raton does not have an MOU.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Barbieri, and as we indicated, in phase two, phase two is where those community-based agencies that may not have an MOU will probably then be contacting us, wanting to then, regards to offering their camps, but going into a lease.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Woodfield?
I was just curious, if you are an organization that already has an MOU, but because of social distancing, you need more space than is at the first location, are they able to go to another location as well? Or do they have to wait till phase two opens up to go to a new location?
Ms. Woodfield, that is something that we would have to work out. You know, we'll work, of course, have to work very closely with Wanda Paul and her team, um, as it pertains to, you know, the facilities. And, you know, we, of course, want to make certain that we maintain the social distancing and be as, and provide those safety aspects as possible. So, we are also including Wanda and her team in making certain that whatever, um, protocol that we're coming up with and working with the agencies, that we are able to accommodate.
And is there going to be an increased expense if, if there is an incidence of COVID that comes into one of these schools?
Well, let me answer that. So, we, we debated that as a team. Um, as of right now, we are not including additional costs in the lease so that we don't deter organizations from using our facilities. So, I'm working with some external partners through, um, the Economic Council and others to help us cover any additional cleaning costs that the district may incur. Um, so that, because what we were afraid of, initially, we were going in that direction. But what we were afraid of, because they're going to have to have limited numbers, that having increased costs and limited numbers could be a problem. And some people may say, well, we can't afford to do it. So, we wanted to try to remove whatever barriers we could. We contacted the head of the Economic Council, the head of the BDB, and we have friends out there who are working to help cover those costs for us.
Thank you. Ms. Brill, and then Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. And so, I'm sort of in a funny situation because I'm the one board member that doesn't have municipalities. And so, it also impacts, when it comes to summer camp, I know my children went to Hagan Road Elementary for summer camp. So, I'm guessing, or Dr. Fanoi, that we are not going to open up, um, our traditional summer camp program. So, that's the first question I have. And then the second question was, I already received a question from a constituent about whether we're going to require masks, or is that something that each organization will determine?
So, the first question, um, the first answer is, we're, again, we're starting with this, and we're, we're going to work towards opening up as many as we can. We also are conflicted by just all the work going in our schools, construction, et cetera, et cetera, and then, you know, all of our planning. I think to your second question, um, what was that question? I'm so sorry. I lost it.
It, it was about whether we're going to require masks, or is it up to the individual organizations who run those camps?
So, we will be working, and we probably will be talking to the board about this, but we are drafting a set of guidelines now. And because they're leasing, we're, we'll put our guidelines, and then we're not policing that. Like, so, we're going to put- Like, so we're going to put our recommendations. And then I'm sure, I've talked to folks at the Boys and Girls Club. They have their guidelines. Dr. Alonso is working with these organizations. And so we will, we will, so the answer is, we're not sure yet. That's still out, yet to be determined. I know there are some board members that are adamant that kids should wear their masks all times. You're hearing all different types of things. So for right now, we're going to put it in as a recommendation. And if that organization, they'll have to work with those pieces. And Glenda, am I saying that incorrectly?
You know, you're absolutely correct, Dr. Fanoi. And we're looking at the CDC guidelines and what they're recommending for summer camps. And we're also working very closely with Legal. Thank you, Julianne and her team. And everything that we're putting together and providing will be recommendation. As you said, where we're not necessarily policing the providers, but we are providing them some recommendations as it pertains to maintaining the safety as possible, as close as possible.
Thank you. This is for the superintendent. Dr. Fanoi and Mrs. Sheffield, what is the process if there becomes some issues of, just for lack of a better description, compliance with outside agencies using the school? How do we have assurance that the district can monitor and enforce any compliance-type issues that might possibly arise?
I'll turn that over to Ms. Powell and Dr. Sheffield.
That is, Mrs. Shaw, that is one of the aspects in regards to what we're working with Legal. And that's why we're working very closely with Legal in making certain that whatever recommendations of what we're putting forth, that we, as a district, it's exactly what it is, is a recommendation. Julianne, I don't know if you want to weigh in with, as has been working very closely with us.
Sure. Thank you so much for the question. And Mr. Shaw, thanks for the question as well. As Dr. Sheffield indicated, yes, we are working on a series of recommendations that are best practices. And we are currently reviewing these both with my team as well as the district's Risk Management Department to determine how best to incorporate those in the lease and whether or not they will remain as recommendations that are provided to them so as to not burden the district with monitoring and really getting into the operations of a third-party's operation. And that's really the balance that we're looking for in terms of how we configure these MOUs and any changes to them. If that answers your question, I hope it does.
Okay, are there any other questions from board members? Dr. Robinson?
Okay, thank you. So obviously, this is something I'm very much interested in. So let me be very clear. I get that we have competing interests because if we were only looking at the public health issues, we would just say no, right? We would not risk anybody being exposed, right? So, but on the other hand, as has been mentioned, we have people, especially, I'm really concerned about people who are on the lower end of the pay spectrum throughout the community and making sure that they have opportunities for their children to be in supervised settings over the summer. Now, as I understand, I want to clarify something. The Phase One, those are sites that are our community-based organizations that have agreements with the county's Youth Services Department, and the children will receive scholarships through Youth Services. Is that correct?
Dr. Robinson, this is Kewanna Howell. The community-based organizations, they all have MOUs with the school district. And most of those agreements, they do accept scholarships.
Okay, so do you know if there are any camps that were approved by Palm Beach County Youth Services to receive their scholarships that were going to be housed in school sites before the pandemic hit that are not on that list?
I'm not aware of those. I'm not aware of their finances and what scholarships they receive. No, I'm not. I can't, I don't have that information.
Okay, so if, you know, I'm going to circle back with whoever I should circle back with to make sure that we don't miss any of those camps. Because Youth Services Department and CSC is putting a lot of money into making sure that children have safe fund, but also some educational opportunities over the summer. And some of those, but not all those camps, were going to be housed in our facility. So I just want to make sure that as we go into Phase One, that unless there's some reason not to, that each and every one of those Youth Services-associated camps would be able to operate. So maybe I'll get the list, or you know the Youth Services people. Can you just reach out to them and cross-reference with them to make sure we're not missing anybody?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, we will reach out to Youth Services with Tammy and Lisa and all of them to make certain that we try to be as inclusive as we possibly could without missing anyone.
Okay, so then, and the other reason that that is very important is because if you look at that list, as I recall it being shared, there's not, there are not many camps there in what I'm going to call the urban corridor that serve elementary school students. So I guess in Phase Two, we had 60-something elementary schools last summer that had FIFA service camps. I just want to make sure we're not setting up a system where we have a few camps for children who would qualify for funding through Youth Services, but we have a plethora of camps for children whose parents can pay, okay? You understand what I'm saying? Like, as we move forward with this, we need to make sure that we are focused on making sure we're meeting the needs of children who might otherwise be unsupervised. Because that's the competing interest that brings me to wanting these camps to open. Go ahead, Dr. Sheffield. I see you.
Yes, Dr. Robinson, no, I do, I concur. And I've already sent in, sending an email now to Tammy where we can get together, and I'll include Kewanna, to just make certain that, of course, again, that we are inclusive with all those agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Part for us was that, because initially, we said that we were not opening up any of the buildings and not entertaining the camps. And it became very evident through the conversation with Dr. Fanoi and the community agencies that we needed to do something for our students, and they needed. And so today, I mean, this week, we just said we have to do it in phases to try to get Phase One, then we'll move into Phase Two. Because we still have great concerns in regarding to this whole COVID-19 and the social distancing. And how do we just keep everyone healthy and safe in trying to create the opportunity?
I appreciate that.
We'll reach out to you, as you do know, some of those individuals, and have that contact read at hand.
So, and I appreciate that, and I think the phasing is wise. But now, let me go to what, for me, is a showstopper, okay? It is a showstopper for me to not expect that everyone in the camp make every attempt possible to keep their face covered. That's a showstopper for me. I don't care what the CDC says, okay? I don't care what Dr. Alina Alonso says. Like, see, because I understand the hierarchy in the politics of medicine here. So let me, there's one thing over here, then let's have, let's have some real conversation. That's why I'm really, really thrilled that Dr. Jean Malakie, who's the former head of our Health Department, who in fact trained Dr. Alonso as well as my husband, has agreed to weigh in on these things because she's not tied to the politics. She could bring the pure public health viewpoint. And then when we had that pure public health viewpoint, then we have to weigh that against all of our competing interests, right? But at least we'll have that pure input from a very knowledgeable source. But let me just say, I'm not, I'm not going to support it. I am not going to support it if we soft pedal the face covering, right? I don't think we have to police it, right? There's a whole lot of things that we put in agreements with agencies that we expect, that we don't go turn around and police, okay? And so for me, the word recommend is not strong enough. To me, it, we need to expect, you know, I would say mandate, but mandate starts looking like we're going to double-check it, right? But at least we expect. And I would expect that when these camps are open, that the school-based administrators that are on campus during the summer would walk by and they would eyeball to see if that's happening. But I'm not trying to do the gotcha. These are responsible adults who are running these camps. But we need to share the expectation that young and older alike will have facial covering on, especially while indoors. Now, I think I can live, unless Dr. Malakie told me I'm wrong, I could live with, if they're going outside for recreation, that they might not have the facial covering on then. But to me, it's very clear that in addition to the limited number of children in the room, which I think is nine children per one adult, and that they need to have the facial covers. And there's, and I know that there's some other measures in place to keep the children safe in terms of those recommendations. But it troubles me that the CDC and the recommendations that I saw from elsewhere did not include that facial covering for young people. And so I just need to make that clear. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. I have a question for Dr. Robinson about her comments. So in the comments, you were mentioning face coverings were attempted for everyone. Did you idealize that for, I hear you say, children, at, to what age would you like them? I'm just curious. I'm imagining children wouldn't be able to, very little ones, so.
Well, okay, so these camps are for, start with kindergarten-age students, right? And so, you know, I've had some people who would say to me, "You can't expect, you know, children that young to keep their facial coverings on." Okay, so that's why it's not a mandate, but it is an expectation, right? So just like I don't expect my grandson to pick his nose, when I see him do it, I say, "Stop picking your nose." So if I see you take your facial covering off, I tell you to put it back on, right? But it's not like a policing thing. And I tell my grandchildren, you know, "I don't want to get you sick. That's why I need you to cover your face," right? So I don't need to make you the vector of disease, right? But, but yeah.
The other thing somebody had mentioned to me was about children with sensory issues. They might not be able to have things on their face. So I think if we write this into a lease, we should, you know, put in there that, you know, those children obviously just need additional spacing.
Like, so, and I think then that, then we start talking legal stuff in my head because then that means the parent signing off something saying that they know that their child might not be as highly encouraged to keep their facial covering on. I mean, so, yeah. I mean, I think we have to be sensitive to those needs. But I think the expectation is everybody, every, you know, breathing person on the campus has their face covered, so.
Well, let me finish by just saying I agree with you. I think that it's about setting expectations. When I walk into a place, I went to Lake Worth Beach a couple of weeks ago, which I highly regretted because not one person there had a face covering, and I was just trying to get a takeout. And I thought, "Okay, can't be here because there's just no one with it covered." So, you know, I thought at the time, if everyone was, then it would feel normal. So, yeah, I think it's about setting those expectations. So I agree with you.
Mrs. Whitfield, glad to see Nora. Over there.
She's hungry, just so you know. This is not the normal baby. She's usually doing so good. I'll feed her in a second. You'll see, she's much happier.
Mom, you got to get busy.
Yeah, she's, she just woke up from a very, very long nap, so I'm grateful for that.
Hey, I would like to take an opportunity to address something Ms. Brill asked. So we're not ready to share right now, but Dr. Sheffield is also working with her team about what we do for our special needs students. You know, we're really considering, and again, these are all options. So we don't have any finalized plan, but I want you to know we're working on it. We're thinking about abbreviated summer schedule, but we have to talk to staff. I mean, as you all know, there's a lot of complicated pieces to this. So just know that it's on our radar, Ms. Brill. Please let your constituents know. And we're going to do everything in our power to see what's reasonable to get those kids back as soon as possible.
Thank you. I have a question. Dr. Sheffield? Yeah, it's you over there.
Yes.
There's a camp. For the last five years, I believe it's been five years, it's been held at Sunrise Park Elementary School in the western Boca Raton. The camp takes in migrant children that are not English-speaking children. The difference in those kids over the summer every year has been phenomenal. Is there any chance that you could talk to Mrs. Steiger, the principal of that school, and see if you can fit that in?
If it's for our migrant, if it's for our, you said it's for our migrant student population?
Yes.
Okay, what I need to do, because we do have a summer program for our migrant students. So I'm going to follow up with Mr. O'Acquah, Harvey, in regards to with our ELO students. I'm going to follow up with him and see what kind of services and support that we can provide for those students that typically participate, if they're migrant students.
Okay, that'd be great. Mrs. Steiger's the one that's been on that. She's the principal there. They've done a great job over the years at that school, those children, so you could get in touch.
Yeah, I will, because we have a program that will be starting up, district-operated program virtually, that's starting up actually for our migrant students. I'll reach out to Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members want to discuss this item? Okay, the next item that we have a board discussion is, Mrs. Brill, you want to discuss board meetings?
Yes, thank you. And I spoke to Dr. Fanoi earlier this week about, you know, it's wonderful to see all of you on Google Meet, but I do feel that we do lack the public participation, you know, in our meetings when we're like this. And I know that it's premature right now because we don't know how to handle the public coming into the Fulton Holland building and our boardroom. But I did, the superintendent suggested that we have a conversation about starting our meetings, looking at July, to give them enough time to be able to get things in place, including Dr. Robinson, the public wearing masks, you know, to come in and start our meetings face-to-face. You know, I was thinking more like, you know, June 17th, but I understand that's probably too soon. So I just wanted to open up that conversation with all of you.
Mr. McQuinn?
Do we have information from how the county commission is having their meetings face-to-face now?
Does anybody know the answer to that? Anybody on staff?
Well, I think that we might want to find out. Apparently, there have not been issues.
Right. And I was going to say, I've watched their meetings, and they did have distancing between the people that attended. I have seen that some people don't wear masks while others do. But I think that we need to move in that direction, especially if we're talking about opening up the schools. I just, I don't want to impose on the superintendent and staff as we move into the phase of opening up the camps and other programs, putting a burden on them. But I certainly would like to set a date of the beginning of July, since we are going to meet through July. This will get us a chance also to start socializing that with the public. So that's why I'm bringing this up.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. And one of the things I brought up a few weeks ago was about the public comment. Now, you know, we have them just do a recording and send it in to us. But Boynton Beach, with Mr. Cass, he says, "You have no further than look to Boynton Beach." And they have a system set up where the public comments are done through BI Google or whatever. So we need to kind of reach around within our neighborhood to find out who has actually taken the next step up so that we can make sure that we get the voices of the public and they get a chance to be able to fully, as much as possible, participate, as well as all of us. Thank you.
Anybody else? I can tell you all one thing. I came up here today because we have spotty internet connection down when it's storming in South County. It's pretty lonely in here. I'm the only one in this great, huge boardroom. I wish you all were here, too. Mr. Shaw?
Yes, I agree with Mrs. Brill. I'd like to see us do it. But the question for Dr. Fanoi may know this. I thought that some of this was dependent on what authorization the governor has given. How much, how much impact, or Ms. Rico, I see your hand go up, but what is the status of the legal authority we have to do it? Because I'd like to see us meet again.
And I'm going to defer to Julianne real quick. Uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna defer to, to Julianne real quick, but I think the truth is, I think at this point, once the emergency orders are lifted, we can do whatever we want, and so from my perspective, we can move as fast as the board wants to move, uh, the question becomes, you know, how many of you want to be in that space, but Julianne's gonna talk more about, it's the public part that's actually more important, and I'll turn it over to Julianne.
Thank you, and let me just, um, clarify on the executive orders, I think there, um, with, in, a little bit of, of clarification necessary, so as you, you all may recall, initially, the Department of Education issued an emergency order, or an executive order that indicated that meetings could only be done virtually and only for emergencies. Soon thereafter, the governor issued an executive order about virtual meetings, which essentially, um, uh, permitted an override, legal override to the, um, otherwise rule that we can't have virtual meetings. So that's, that's the position we're in now, so we're having these virtual meetings pursuant to permissible executive order, but we, um, certainly may, from a legal standpoint, have in-person meetings. The caveat to all of that is that, uh, one, of course, we have to adhere to all of the, uh, usual sunshine law requirements, including the, um, uh, public access, and then secondly, the other caveat that I, um, shared with Dr. Finney and, um, and there's, uh, during our conversations about this, and I think that's what he was alluding to, is that we've got to have adequate and valid provisions for, um, public access in terms of the people that will be coming in, who are not employees, who are not, um, subject to our, our, uh, policies otherwise, in terms of protocols for health and safety, so, um, that's the piece that I think needs to be worked on, um, before we, uh, reconvene in, uh, the public, live public setting, if you will, so thank you for allowing, and, and I also will say, third caveat, I just got a text from my staff that a new executive order was just issued, and we're currently reviewing that to, um, see how it affects some of these issues, and we'll certainly keep you, uh, timely advised, as soon, as soon as we decipher that, thank you.
Prelimarily, what it said is that the, uh, governor announced that they're moving to phase two reopening, but we're not included in that, so we are still in phase one. Um, and so I think the other piece for discussion is, um, we, we had, uh, we had a hybrid meeting in March, where four of you were present and three of you are not. Right now, our technological challenge, we determined, we found out, is that we can't have you all on Google Hangouts that way, so those who were still not yet comfortable coming in, as of right now, would have to be on the phone bridge, and we wouldn't be able to see you, so the team is still trying to figure that piece out, it's the feedback loops and the sound, there's something about that, but right, and if we wanted to go back to our very last in-person meeting, we could, we could do that, because we have a process for the, the community, we put them in one room, we, I mean, we, we, we figured that out rather quickly, and Chief Kitchell has all of that prepared, so it's just a matter of discussion for the board, and we'll, we, we can work through that.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, I recently went to a city commission meeting, um, that they were able to do live, and the commission is sitting at the dais, they were at tables in, in their, uh, in their room, uh, all separated, with staff being up at the dais, and, um, in the audience, everybody had masks on, and they had chairs that were marked off for social distancing, so I think there are some options, but, you know, I agree with Mrs. Brill, I'd like to see us at least start looking at how we can do this if possible.
Great, are there any other comments? All right, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can move to the next. Motion by Ms. Brill, taken by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero, meeting adjourned.